We're at six o'clock. This meeting is called to order to stand would be led in prayer by Mr. Shaw.
Do the flag. Mr. Green will do the...
You will do it.
I gave you the elbow. Let's have a prayer. Let's remember our country, Lord, as we pray. Lord, we just thank you for this opportunity to come together tonight and to work on city business, Lord, and we just thank you for it and thank you for all of you that participated in it. All the folks that helped out to make us strong in our community. Lord, we just pray for our country tonight in a special way, Lord, that we just got lots of bad problems and we need your help. And, Lord, we just give you the honor and praise for all that you already do for us, but, Lord, we just need more. These people need the love of Christ. And, Lord, we give you honor too and praise in Christ's name. Amen.
Salute flag. Flag to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. Ms. Goldman, roll call to determine a quorum.
Ms. Moore, Mr. Prater.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Green.
Mr. Locke.
Here.
Mayor, all presidency of a quorum.
Thank you. We've done invocation. I'm going to forego the announcements. I did have some, but they will hold. We want to get to the chamber banquet. We have a firefighter and a police officer being honored, so we'll try to get through the agenda as quickly as possible. But on that with announcement, we do have some good announcements that are coming in the next few weeks, so I'll be more than happy to do that at a later date. Item number four, approval of previous minutes, regular meeting, February 10, 2022. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion now.
Properly moved. And second, in the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, public comments as it relates to items on the agenda. Item number six, consideration of and action on reports of committees appointed by the governing authority body. Did, I know you heard from Chief Reed. Are there any committee reports that anybody want to talk about briefly? Any updates from your district or anything that you want to share? Okay. I have been meeting with council members individually to get a feel of your district, and we want to highlight your district and find what accentuates your district, what is unique to your district that could be a good selling point as we put together our revitalization plan. So that's a working progress, and I thank you, those of you who have already met. And, Mr. Green, we got a date for Monday, right?
Right.
Okay.
I'll be working on the lights.
Entergy is working on the lights.
The lights is out?
Are you talking about streetlights?
Yeah, I thought you...
Entergy, in fact, they have replaced, if you drive through the west side of town...
West side? No, no, I'm talking about this should be. I don't care about the west side.
Okay.
I don't care about the west side.
Well...
This should be.
This should be?
This should be. That's all I'm concerned about. That's all I'm concerned about. This should be.
Okay. We have 250 out. You think all of them in your district? We have...
We're not talking about the west side.
Well, this is where they started.
But we, all of us got a piece in this pack, okay?
This should be, Robert. Then we come back to you.
C.
B coming for C.
Wait a minute. Calm down, gentlemen. We are in a formal meeting. Entergy wanted to start on the main quarter, so they started on the west side of town. So we don't dictate to them where to go. You know, they have their crews, so we have to know where our administration starts and stops. So they will get around to it.
They did a good job, ma'am.
They are.
How? We in a formal meeting, how?
Okay. But they will get to you.
They took a good job. When?
I can't say. I don't know Entergy's schedule.
Can I get my own?
I doubt it.
Ms. Goldman, can I let you know what's out?
You can call them.
Okay, good.
You can call yourself.
Okay. They drove your district, but you can give that to Public Works because they drove all the streets. They took pictures. We had over 250, I think.
Sometime they need a little help.
Okay, well, if you want to ride with them, that's up to you. Okay. Item number seven, reports of city officials or employees required by law or by action of governing authority. Y'all heard from, was it anything from the fire department, Ms. Goldman? We did get L-GAP grant. Is Timmy or Thomas here?
No, I'm sure he is. I think they went out for the banquet and to be recognized, the fireman and the police person.
Okay. A, Finance Committee report, resolution 221992, bills and claims for the month of February 2022. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, Finance Committee has reviewed the bills and claims for the month of February, and we recommend that we adopt this, we adopt this bills and claims.
Properly moved?
Second.
And second, in the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item number eight, action on ordinance and resolutions introduced at previous meeting. We don't have anything on that, Ms. Goldman, right?
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay. Item number nine, other unfinished business. Do we have any other unfinished business?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Item number nine, that takes care of that. We might make it to the chamber banquet in record time. Item number 10, introduction of and permitted action on proposed ordinances and resolution. Ms. Goldman?
We don't have any at this time, ma'am.
Okay. We are down to item number 11, other new business. Mr. Ricky Anderson, Agenda Guidelines, Procedural Parliamentary Law.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you would, please. I do have handout.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Did you state your name for the record? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm trying to... I be getting you a different.
Shouldn't have two. Okay, one more. Mr. Anderson, would you give that on Mr. Pierre's place sitting? Ms. Goldman, would you give that to Mr. Locke?
Okay.
Thank you for me for the error. Ladies and gentlemen, last month, November 10, 2022, Agenda. And I just want to talk to you about two things. And the first thing is the Agenda itself and guidelines. I gave you last month three documents, EE1, EE2, and EE3. Today, I'm giving you EE4, 5, and 6. EE4 is two documents, and it's the Agenda dated November the 10th, 2021, and it says the approval of the minute number four, and then signed off by the mayor, by the authority. The attached sheet to that, EE4, is the November 10, 2022 Agenda, number four, approval of the minutes, signed off by the mayor, by the authority. EE5 is the City Council Agenda dated December the 14, 2017, and says down there, previous approval of the minutes, item number five, signed off by former Mayor Cotton. Attached to EE5 with the documents dated June the 13th, 2019, the approval of the minutes, signed off by former Mayor Henry Cotton. The reason why I'm bringing this to the board attention, how can the community or anyone comment about the approval of the previous minutes? And the reason why I say that, ladies and gentlemen, is because parliamentary law is a body ruled governing procedure in legislative and deliberated assembly, which is you all. Now, with that said, EE6 is the regular minutes from February of last month, 2022. In the outline, it says down there, Mr. Ricky Allen Anderson asked the council to table the matter of appointing the chief of police. You go follow down there at the bottom in the outline, it said, Lando Reed appointed chief of police on a motion by Mr. Locke, seconded by Mr. Shaw, followed by a vote of three to two. Ms. Moore, Mr. Prater voted no. Mr. Locke, Mr. Shaw, and the mayor voted yes. Now, EE6 is just a print of the minutes, but the actual recording stated when the mayor had the opportunity, when the court informed her it was a tie, she had the opportunity to break it, but she made a statement, "I offer a veto." Now, in other words, veto, a vast power of constitutional right on one branch or department of government, the right of a chief executive, which is you, the mayor, to reject a bill that a legislative body has just approved, thus preventing and/or delaying the attachment into the law. In other words, what you did last month was not in order. I wish Mr. Pierre was here. He could correct me. I'm not a lawyer. But parliamentary rule states she made an offer to veto what you had just voted on. Mr. Locke voted yes. Mr. Shaw voted yes. She offered a veto. Mr. Pierre said, "No, ma'am. You must vote," and you said, "Yes." You left the veto out there and just walking around here as of the date. If you had withdrew your veto, ma'am, then it would have been my rule, what my thinking is. But for now, I believe what you have established here was a null and void process and proceeding that you took care of last month in appointing Mr. Reed as chief of police. Your veto killed Mr. Locke vote and Mr. Shaw vote, ma'am, and you did not rescind it. If you had rescinded, then voted, I believe you had ground to appoint Mr. Reed and being legal as chief of police. Like I say, I think this board should look into this. I believe in my heart that error was made in parliamentary law in this proceeding in appointing your chief of police last month. Is there any question or any discussion? I believe someone should point to order when the mayor made an error and say, "I offer a veto." Mr. Pierre say, "You can only vote?" She said, "Yes," and that was the end of that. Thank you for your time, Mr....
So you said the veto was thrown out there and it was just nothing spoken on it?
When you throw a veto out there, from my position, from parliamentary law, it either has to be voted on and dealt with it. It wasn't even dealt with after the veto was out there. It's still out there.
It was just said and nothing else?
There's nothing else. That's the reason I believe your process last month was null and void. Now, that's my belief. But I'm not punning things. I just want this government to run after a correct body, a correct body. Now, take that under consideration, ladies and gentlemen. Please do. I owe due respect for every law enforcement officer, but if we're going to do something in order, let's do it in order. I believe we made error. That's my belief. That's my belief. Thank you.
Where is Mr. Pierre today?
I saw him. He was out there somewhere.
Oh, I think by virtue of my vote, I recall saying my vote is yes. Let's go to item number...
Where is our lawyer today?
I have not spoken with him.
You have not?
I have not.
I spoke to him coming in.
Item number... B. James G. Scott Walter Moore. Payment for Civil Service Board Lawyer Billy Casey.
I'm going to say good evening again, mayor, city council members. An unknown author once said, "Work hard, be faithful, and you'll get your just rewards." I stand here tonight as a representative of the municipal Bastrop Fire and Police Civil Service Board as vice chairman, pleading for the pay of Mr. Billy Casey, who was obtained as the lawyer for the Civil Service Board in August 2021. Mr. Casey has not been paid for his services to the board. As I stated in the, as stated in the Civil Service Guide, the funding for the operation of the Civil Service Board is through the city. We don't have money. The board did a new resolution, sent it to Baton Rouge, and they told us that the price was a little high, that we, the state could only pay the amount of $225 an hour. That's all that was allowed. Mr. Casey accepted that, but he still has not been paid. Mr. Casey accepted that amount, went down from what he said was $350 an hour, and as we know, yes, sir. When someone worked, if it's a day, a week, a month, the end result is a reward, and that's what he was working for, his money, trying to help someone. We were never given a budget for the city, if that's include, if the civil service money is included in a budget. We were never given one. So we don't know what the budget is. Now, on my emails, I do remember the mayor put something like, "We don't have any money, $600." That's kind of ridiculous. What mayor is going to work? I mean, what lawyer is going to work for $600?
Okay, if you would put a pen, Ms. Goldman, you have that sheet?
Now... We ask the city, the city council to take in this in consideration tonight before a lawsuit is filed by Mr. Casey. This is the first time since I've been on the board that we've had this kind of confusion. Thank you for all for your consideration, and I do hope you all do what's right because it is the city's responsibility.
Mr. Moore, question?
Yes.
What's the procedure for y'all to go get a lawyer? Do you have to come before the board, the council?
It doesn't say that in the book, in the guideline. It just said the lawyer is picked by the Civil Service Board. Now, if we were supposed to come before you, I've never seen that.
Y'all gonna have any guidelines or anything like that?
What'd he say?
You gonna have any guidelines?
Oh, yeah. We, I don't, I can find them. I'll try to find them in this book.
Yeah, because I think, I'm sorry, Ms. Scott, that's probably my biggest question would be, what's the procedure again to obtain a lawyer? Do you have to come before the board? Because you have to come before the board, then if y'all went purchase a lawyer, what got a lawyer, didn't come before the council, that's not right. But if it's not, nothing in writing, just saying that y'all have to come before the council, then it's something that we need to discuss.
What I did was I called the secretary. I called to her and told her we need a lawyer.
Secretary, what, our secretary?
Yes.
Terrence? Okay.
That's what I went to after we decided we needed one, and it went from there.
So somebody gave you the okay to go ahead and get one?
Secretary would know that. Yes, she did. That's what I went to.
Okay. In my opinion, and I said, in my opinion, we got some information that says that they do not have to come before us for, in order to find an attorney. So I want to do the right thing, and we want to be fair, but this is the information that I have, that the Civil Service Board does not have to come before the mayor or board of aldermen to get approval to get an attorney. That's the information I have. So as a board and as a city, we want to do the right thing. So if Mr. Pierre thinks we need to get an attorney general opinion, we will do that.
So, Ms. Anderson, so with all, with the civil service situation, all the attorneys involved, that's covered by the city?
I don't know about the, I don't know.
Mm-hmm. Go, please.
There is law that deals with that, okay? Does the Civil Service Board have to come before you all before attempting to retain an attorney? It's simple answer, there is none.
Okay.
Is there a procedure in place as you asked Councilman Green? Yes, there is a procedure.
Can you tell me?
The procedure is found in the Vice Statute, Part of 42, Section 263, and that particular procedure says that in order for the Civil Service Board to retain an attorney, they have to first establish a real necessity. That's specifically in the statute. And if you all want to look it up, I can give you guys copy.
Yeah, give us a copy.
And it says specifically they have to establish a real necessity for the attorney. At that point in time, the Civil Service Board has to pass a resolution establishing a real necessity for the attorney and also set forth the attorney's fee agreement. That resolution has to be then sent to the attorney general for approval. The attorney general will approve the fee agreement and the resolution of the board. At that point in time, that resolution comes back to the Civil Service Board. In this particular case, what's, I guess, the issue here is this, the attorney general cannot bind the city of Bastrop in contract. They cannot bind the city in contract. The city's contract is governed by your budget that you adopted, I think in July, something like that. It's just like any other thing that you have. Anytime there's an effort to get the city to be bound in contract, that is something that you all have to agree to. Now, whether or not they can get an attorney, surely can. Of course, in that case, according to the vice chair, they said that they don't have a budget. Well, the real question is, what's the real necessity? They did submit a resolution to the attorney general, and they just said that we needed lawyers. They didn't say what the real necessity was, but the attorney general did respond back to them. And attorney general also responded back to the city and said specifically, and I think that on the same day that they responded back to the Civil Service Board, and I want to say that was on February the 3rd of 2022, the attorney general's office responded saying that they had approved the resolution, the resolution which was saying that they wanted a lawyer, but that the city's on to them to what's within their budget. So...
Can we amend the budget to pay the lawyer?
That's you all called to amend the budget, but I think that there's some other issues that you need to amend the budget for. But I mean, I have a lot that I could say with respect to that. The real necessity was not established in the, in the resolution. They just say we need a lawyer. Whether or not that needs to be addressed with the attorney general, I have no problem addressing that with the attorney general. I've spoken with attorney general's office before on this issue back in, I want to say maybe September, October, when this issue first came about with the attorney. Of course, that's never been a request for an attorney before, and the attorney that came in on that particular day came in for the purposes of prosecuting the case, which is not the role of the Civil Service Board. The Civil Service Board's specific obligation is to listen to the complaint and to make a decision. To have an attorney to come in on that particular day to prosecute the matter on behalf of the Civil Service Board, I think, was not a quote-unquote "real necessity" as is established by the attorney general's office for purposes of adoption of a resolution. But they only said we needed a lawyer, and attorney general said, "Okay, you need a lawyer. I'll approve your resolution," but the attorney general's office said we cannot bind the city of Bastrop in contract.
Mr. Scott, Ms. Moore, what was the purpose of the lawyer?
We didn't get a lawyer to prosecute anybody. That's never the deal. But the record, the record was like... First, we need a lawyer is because we're putting the people alive. We got firemen and we got policemen. We use the lawyer to make sure that we don't do civil service laws wrong, we follow correctly. That's why we need a lawyer. We want to ensure everybody is done fairly. We don't want to take anybody's job from him by mistake. So the civil service lawyer knows things that we do not know. You understand?
So in other words, pretty much the lawyer that you guys got came and did the job with the Civil Service Board?
No. He assists us to make sure that we, that we make any mistakes with the law.
And the city had an attorney, so we needed an attorney.
Talking of the city had...
Yes.
Pierre?
I think both were here at that time.
You talking about, you talking about the other lawyers involved?
And, and Pierre was here. So we couldn't just go in front of him without someone representing. It all, it really started when Officer Captain Givens. That's when all of this started.
So who signed the contract with the lawyer?
Who signed the contract? You don't have to have a contract.
I'm saying, when you go by and talk to the lawyer, y'all don't have to have an agreement, somebody had to sign off on it? For you, so when you get a lawyer, listen, so when you get a lawyer, right, so do, no one had to sign on and say, "Okay, you can come and be our lawyer"?
The city, we turn that over to the secretary.
So somebody signed off on it?
I don't know if they did.
So is it possible we can get the contracts? Then that way we can know, because if somebody signed off on it, I want to know who signed off on it.
And if somebody signed off on it, we liable.
Right. Depends on who signed off on it.
Well, we're, well, the city, the city...
Mr. Pierre?
Let me, let me try to make certain that everybody's clear. In a civil service action by statute, both parties are entitled to have a lawyer. The agreed party are the person who's subject to actions by the board as what is the appointing authority. I sit in a role as the representative of the appointing authority as by you all putting me in the place of the city attorney. By statute, I represent the administration. I represent all the, not, of course, I represent you all. You all know that. And I represent the heads of the department by chart. I represent all of you all. So on that particular day, the appointing authority's representative is me. That's the bottom line. If it was the chief of police, of course, it is me. If it's an officer, it can't be me. He's not the head of the department. However, not however, I'm sorry, the Civil Service Board, I mean, the agreed person before the Civil Service Board is also entitled to an attorney. As the gentleman said a few moments ago, I think it started with Mr. Givens. Mr. Givens had his representative here. So Mr. Givens' representative was here... So Mr. Givens' representative was here, the appointing authority's representative was here. Those are only two parties involved. The civil service board is not a party. The civil service board sits in judgment. They're like the court. They sit in judgment. And when they sit in judgment, they're receiving the complaint made by the, uh, uh, appointing authority, or the complaint in other cases that the county board made by the, uh, the civil servant, and they review the complaint, and they listen to the evidence. That's their job. Their job is not to prosecute, okay?
I, I, I'm gonna be, so is it possible that we can get their contract? Also too, don't we have various other board, like the zoning board? So in that case, they can do the same thing, just go off and get a lawyer?
But you gotta look at their civil service. That's different.
Yeah, who signed off on the contract?
Mr. Green. And I have been in touch with the Attorney General's office. Uh, Ms. Goldman, did you give them this communication?
No, ma'am.
Okay. This is the second paragraph. That first, um, communication, resolution, which was signed off, I never signed, I never bind the city in any contract. Okay, the cost was thirty-five hundred dollars per attendance at three hundred and fifty dollars an hour. That first proceeding lasted ten hours. That's not including prep time and whatever else court reporters. So you're looking at one expense in excess of seven thousand dollars. Okay, this letter dated November ten, two thousand twenty-one, from the Attorney General's office. It has also come to my attention that the city of Bastrop already has counsel, Mr. Jay Rodney Pierre. Because of this, please provide justification, and Mr. Pierre spoke to this, on the real necessity of hiring outside counsel.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, the second, hold, hold your thought, Mr. Green. Uh, your questions are welcome. Okay, the next communication dated February the third. It is important that when a board enters into a contract, and this is from the Attorney General's office, to procure legal counsel that is for an amount that it is authorized to spend. We expect that the board will review its budget to make sure that the contract is in accordance with the law and local budget acts. The contract should not be open-ended, but should contain a defined scope of services. Additionally, there must be a cap on the contract, and it should be within the budget for the board. I'm operating from the budget that was given to me July one. That's what was in the, in the budget, and it has already exceeded that. The state legislative auditor, attorney spoke to how things were going, and before I fix my name to something that's gonna lead this city down a path that I know is not right, it's gonna have to be some more dialogue.
Hey, um, Ms. Moore, Ms. Scott, what I, what I was asking was, when Humelver went and got the lawyer you guys got, did someone sign an agreement with their lawyer? If so, who did?
We.
If you, and also, if you can get it to me, like a copy of it, that'd be helpful.
That would be in the resolution.
Mm-hmm.
That give you a copy of it?
Mm-hmm.
She has it.
Who has it?
I have a copy of it.
You have a copy of the, the agreement?
Mm-hmm.
Who signed it, Ms. Angela? Ms. Frey, you got your copy?
And if I could point you all to attention of one additional thing, and I was just, of course, y'all get up here for the law. Uh, I read you all the statute forty-two, two sixty-three. The next statute is the statute forty-two, two sixty-four, which is called penalties. Is that any attorney knowingly accepts employment compensation from a parent, government, authority, parish school board, living board, city city board, or other local board, or state board, uh, not previously approved by the Attorney General, must, uh, uh, must immediately upon notification that will return any like dollar or fund. Uh, the change, I mean, the legislature's already addressed this issue of going out, doing work, coming back, sending the bill. So they already said a penalty, but that is that if you go out and you do it, you're kind of at your own risk. You know, and I've spoken to Mr. Casey before, even before we got to this point here. I'm like, Billy, I'm like, you're not doing this right. And I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Casey, you, you're not doing this right. And it was only until months later, after we had been through all kinds of stuff with the civil service board, with this gentleman here, uh, working diligently, because he's been working for the civil service board, uh, 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 doing things, billing hours, you know, uh, binding somebody in contract, uh, for his services rendered, you know, that they subsequently went back and adopted a resolution and sent it to the Attorney General asking that, you know, be paid. But the issue is, uh, as the Attorney General's letter has reflected, as the mayor provided to you all, is that where's the real necessity? I mean, the, the attorney who came in here, and I'm telling you, because I was here, prosecuted a case against the appointing authority. He was here questioning and interrogating witnesses on behalf of the agreed party versus listening to and advising the board, sitting up there telling the board, "Okay, under this situation, this is what you should do and should not do."
And the necessity.
And I've said to the board, and I've said to the attorney sitting here, and it's already fully documented, that if you're gonna advise this aboard, advise them properly. And I'll give you one simple example of that. We came before the board with this attorney, and it was a real simple issue. The issue is whether or not the Bill of Rights is afforded to a police officer the same way it's afforded to a fireman. The board got confused up there, and they thought that the Bill of Rights had to be provided to the particular agreed party at the point in time when an investigation started. This attorney did not advise the board that those two different things confused the board when it was just so simple, "No, that's not what the law says." But he refused to do that, maybe because he was feeling, I don't know. But the long and short of it is, and I said it, I said it to him, on that record, it's in transcript, if you're gonna advise them, advise them right. Now, that would be the role of an attorney if a real necessity existed, to advise that board, but not to prosecute. That board is not a prosecutor. That board is to sit, to listen to what's being presented, and make a decision. It's been doing it for years.
I mean, I, I definitely agree with that. Also, I'm gonna speak on behalf of me. Like this civil service board stuff, you know, headache. So now we got two lawyers, we got the, the city, and then we got another lawyer, which, we paying you, and then we gotta pay someone else, and they got a lawyer. Like some, we gonna have to make it right. It's our job to make it right. We gotta do our due diligence and make it right.
And I know you were saying we ran out of money, out of the budget, but the last civil service hearing, it was two lawyers sitting up there, so who paid them? Who paid them? Is my question.
Let, let me?
Let me address it.
Go ahead.
Address it, because that came up in district court across the street. In the, in the proceeding where the, there were two lawyers sitting right there, well, another firm representing the city.
Mm-hmm.
Because the civil service board subpoenaed me. They subpoenaed me, well, let me take it back. I don't know who subpoenaed me. It said the civil service board. I asked the attorney for the civil service board, Mr. Casey, "Did you subpoena me?" "No, I didn't subpoena you." I asked Mr. Ross, the attorney for the civil servant, "Did you subpoena me?" "No, I didn't subpoena you." They said that here, and they said that across the street in district court. But they subpoenaed me to testify, so now I can't represent the city. But the city is entitled to representation.
So we paid, we paid them, right?
I don't know what we, I'm assuming we got the contract for representation because the civil service board subpoenaed me as a witness, but did they call me? No.
Did we pay them, Ms. Goldman?
I'm not got a bill.
Okay.
At the time, when we had a lawyer, we couldn't use you, because you were the city attorney. So you were not, I, we didn't think that was gonna be fair to the person.
Did anybody sign, from the city, sign off on you? I think that was the original.
It has to be with sis, uh, Ms. Holmes.
Wait, wait, just a minute.
But they don't have to.
Uh.
Nobody has to sign off.
Listen, Ms. Angela, so you, you can go get a lawyer without getting a contract? That's, that's my question.
Civil service law, it says you can, civil service.
Now, uh, I read to you, you heard from our legal counsel, the history of it. I read to you what the Attorney General's office said.
How much?
Now, how much is your bill?
How much is the bill?
We don't have a code. I gave her the, uh.
I have a copy, he gave me some stuff here.
You know, you got, you know, you got four more other councilmen.
I didn't, I didn't make copies.
You got four more, four more other councilmen. They'll be glad for us to get the copy too. Because we, we don't know nothing about the copy.
I find it interesting that as chief executive officer for the city of Bastrop, that I have not seen a bill, no one has engaged in conversation, and Ms. Jerissa Holmes is a secretary, and she does not have the authority to engage a contract. There, there's protocol, as I said. I spoke with the attorney for the state legislative auditor. They, they recommended that I take the civil service board before a judge to have you cease and desist. I tried to, to keep this.
Is it negotiable? We don't want to get to that point. It's a contract negotiation.
We already know.
No.
But still, but, okay, the, uh.
You say sis, Ms. Holmes is the, what now?
We're not gonna, I'm not gonna ask for a motion to vote on it.
She's the secretary for the city, or you're saying the board?
She works for the city, she is the secretary for the, but she does not engage. Nobody has that other, Mr. Pierre?
I make the motion.
That's another thing we need to address, 'cause in here, we can hire a secretary for seven fifty a month, or twelve fifty, depending on the size of the city. That's what I'm trying to see. So if she's working for you, we know that it's going, it has to go your way, that's her job.
Excuse me, order?
So that's why I'm saying, uh, it may be possible that the civil service need to hire a secretary for the justice civil service board, and you all have to pay that money every month to that person.
Well, if we have a bill that we don't know, an open-ended budget, and we don't know how much it is, and it comes up to be thirty or forty thousand.
Why are we just not, I mean, you didn't tell us that we, you needed to know how much it is, because we felt.
You never asked.
Ms. Angela, you got the bill?
But look, we're not.
You are the appointing authority, you are the over the city. So we need to know exactly how much we can spend. That should have been given to us.
Mr. Moore, I would not.
Y'all never aware how much y'all can spend?
No.
Did you ever ask?
That's not our job, that's your job.
Oh, is it?
And the board.
I engage an attorney. Excuse order, order.
Can we table this to next meeting?
I'm going to move on to item number twelve. I, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Hold on, hold on, we, we gonna table this to the next meeting.
Yeah.
I think this only fair.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make the motion to table this to the next meeting.
I second.
Ms., Ms., uh, Sandra, can you do all in favor?
Wait, wait, just a minute, let, we, we, we getting out of order.
We can make the motion to table it to the next meeting, Mary, we can do that.
Wait just a minute, let's, let's have order. Mr. Pierre?
I just wanted to know, Mr. Pierre.
He can't, we can do that.
Moore did kind of, I think she was kind of alluding to perhaps asking me to do some additional research.
Right, right.
And, uh, and, and, I mean, I have no problem.
Right.
If you want me to ask for a paper, or, or consider spoken at AG's office.
Right.
We still waiting for that other one.
Yeah.
And they published him, so I've been looking, and it's not published yet. Uh, I mean, I can call them, I mean, but they've already spoken, but I have no problem calling and trying to request that CDO.
Because to me, it's a, you know, it's a necessity, they, you know, who justifies a necessity? Do we do it, do they do it?
That's a good question.
Real necessity is, has to be established with specificity in the resolution. And then that resolution is submitted to the Attorney General's office. Only thing the resolution said is that we need a lawyer. Now, where's the real necessity? And I think they addressed that in correspondence to the mayor, that they had to establish the real necessity. I have no problem following up, uh, uh, either with Ms. Freo, or with, uh, uh, what is, uh, Angela's, but that's Ms. Freo, the other lady who's doing the money, uh.
Ms. Freo and.
I mean, I, I've spoken to him before, I have no problem speaking to him again, and asking him to call us by, with respect to, send something in, write, send something back in, writing with respect to that. Uh, uh, and that, that's all I, I can do before your next meeting.
That's why we want to take.
Can we, can we, can, that'll work, okay.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see the, the bills as well.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we need the bill as well.
I find it interesting that a bill has been presented to a, to a board member and not presented to the appointing authority, uh.
My thing is, we need to get rid of all these boards, and we're not gonna back them up. We can't leave these boards out there, we don't give them a budget, then we're gonna leave them out there. We don't need no board, we have to get rid of all of them.
Well, we, we can't do that.
We want to get rid of them.
Order.
The law requires that the civil service board.
Well, we gotta have to back these people.
Yeah.
They putting these people out there, we can't stick them out there.
Okay.
I agree, I agree.
Anyway, we got these boards, we gotta stand behind them.
But it gotta make sense.
No, 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 we gonna stand behind them.
Order, okay, now. Any one of you comfortable signing your name to the bill, and it goes to the state?
I think we need to amend, if we amend the budget.
Yeah, amend the budget, amend the budget for everything else.
Yes, amend the budget, and then we'll sign our name.
So.
You don't even know what the amount is.
Well, we amend it.
I do know the amount.
Well, I don't have it, so I don't know what it is.
Well, I do have an amount.
Well, you're not the mayor.
Well, I don't know who she gave, who she gave packages.
Wait, 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 this is an order. I make the motion to table this.
I mean, I don't know who they gave packages to, I know I got a package.
This is ridiculous.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
No, no, we have a motion.
We have a motion, I, I, make the motion to table this to next meeting.
She has a motion on the floor.
Okay.
And second.
Ooh, that's ridiculous.
I second it.
Okay.
Any question? Discussion, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Motion carried at this time.
I do your adjournment.
Yes, sir.
Since I know I'm on task, do something. Then you also want me to, I'm asking you at the board that you, uh, the council, you open a review bill, and even have some discussions with Mr. Casey.
Yes, yes, you try to work it out, yes.
I mean, I, I, I can come in, if you're gonna come right before you, if you're gonna try to take some action.
Yeah.
I guess you probably want to know what you're taking action about, right?
Right.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
And get on, and get on.
I have one right here.
Get on rest, Ms. Pierre.